Okay.
Okay, Mayor, we are now streaming on Facebook Live for the November 24th, 2020 council meeting.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of the Town Council on December 11th, 2019. The notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader and the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. Mrs. Rowley, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Brendel?
Here.
Councilmembers Havegood? Here. Harmily?
Here.
Agrippa?
Here.
Katz?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Contract?
Here.
Dardia?
Here.
Boys?
Here.
Thank you. Can we, can you please join me in standing for a salute to the flag? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
Into the public, for which it stands.
For which it stands. One nation. Indivisible. Justice. And justice for all.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick updates for us tonight. On the COVID front, since last meeting, you've had two positive cases that happened right after our meeting. Luckily, both play people are doing well, and we expect them to be back to normal work next week. We also have six other employees that are in quarantine for various COVID-related protocols. Despite that, that's actually better than we were doing two weeks ago. We had more positive cases and more quarantine. So, again, we continue to be on the staggered shifts that we're on, work from home. So, the good news is that's working. So, when someone does, you know, test positive or is exposed or has potential exposure, other people in the office that are not there or working from home, we're not exposing everybody. So, we have continuity of operations, and it's working rather well right now. So, and luckily, we had nobody that's been very ill, thankfully. And so, we're going to continue to do what we're doing, staggered shifts, work from home where we can. And we don't have to, the mayor will mention her comments, but the cases are going in the wrong direction. So, not only Westfield, but statewide. So, we're monitoring every day. But I want to thank the department heads on this call and everybody else, too, that being very vigilant in Town Hall and the other facilities we have, and make sure that the employees can continue to provide services to the public. So, a couple of other just progress fronts, road paving. Scotts Plains Avenue was finished today. Paving was finished today, and I believe, Chris, I think the road striper hopefully will be out tomorrow to start the road striping on the road, you know, crosswalks, stop bars, intersection stuff. Hopefully, get that done. If not finished by tomorrow, definitely finished by next week. So, that's our last paving job for the year that we were doing, which is great. Reminder, that was a state aid job, so about 90% of the cost of that job is off state aid money. Well, now applying for the balance owed to us by the state, which is great. So, thanks to Chris, he was out there late last night and today to oversee the job and get it finished up in the cold weather. So, that's great. Take a more playground. Last we mentioned, we were waiting for delivery. Playground equipment has been delivered. As you might recall, the old material, equipment was removed. So, we know that the installers should be out there starting next week to install the playground. So, hopefully, weather permitting, we'll be able to get it going next week and hopefully, a couple of week process, if not less. We can then move on to the next step, which is after the playground's installed, working with the Terry DeFalco Neighborhood Group over there to do some of the memorial dedications they wanted to do. But, yeah, so the equipment's here, and hopefully, next week, the installation will begin, which is great. And lastly, just leave collection. Again, today, great news, we were able to finish the first pass completely in both sides of town. So, we are going to be on second pass tomorrow. We'll be back in Zone 1 on the north side, Zone 7 on the south side. We do expect to schedule two Saturday pickups during this second pass, as the volume is much larger. So, we want to try to speed up. The second pass has been most best we can. Couple of other things, too. We, we are still giving out free bags at the Constitution Center. So, for those that want free bags, we do have left, which is great. People can go bag to leaves, and you can either put them at your curb in bags or bring them back to the center in bags. And reminder, this weekend, because of the holiday, this week, excuse me, Thursday and Friday, the center is closed for Thanksgiving holiday. It'll be reopened again Saturday, Sunday. Again, a normal schedule after that. But those are the main updates, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
And just a few updates. Comment on the West Grove Street apartments, the, we lost the appeal for condos to be built there. Are you able to comment on that or talk?
No, my only comment is that, we just got word of that. We do expect to discuss that in an executive session with the council at the next meeting, once we have a chance.
We just got that, we stopped to digest it.
Yeah.
But we lost that one. All right, thank you.
So, good evening, and thanks for joining us virtually tonight. Just a reminder, public comment will only be accepted via Zoom, although we are live streaming for viewing only on Facebook, and the replay will always be available on Facebook, YouTube, and TV36. Just a quick update on COVID cases. As Jim mentioned, it's not a very promising trajectory at all. Today, there were 4383 new cases in New Jersey, another 711 still under investigation, and 313863 total cases to date. Union County reported 26,752, and Westfield reported 18 new cases through, since my last update on Friday, three on Saturday, five on Sunday, two on Monday, and eight today. I do expect these numbers to increase significantly when we get updated Health Department data, which includes rapid tests. And we're not, usually, we get it on Friday, but due to the holiday, I'm not sure. But as, as we've seen in the last few weeks, I expect that number of 18 to go up significantly. Just a few updates, in case you haven't heard from the Governor's Office, small businesses are eligible for discounts on PPE. They also, we are also working aggressively with them and the state on anticipation of a vaccine. And so, I know Megan from the Health Department, they're all working on what the equitable distribution of that will be, and the goal is vaccinating 70% of the adult population in six months. On, and lastly, I'd just say, there's the Union County Board of Commissions just announced a new Rest Easy Caregivers Grant, which provides opportunities for families in need of assistance in caring for children with disabilities and special needs during COVID. So, I think there's approximately $1 million, Federal Cares Act dollars are going to be allocated to this program. So, please, if you are, find yourself in a situation where caring for children with special needs, please, please reach out if you have any questions, so we can help you facilitate that application. Moving on to local things, just want to ask if you or anyone you know is interested in opening up a restaurant or bar in our Northside train station. We provide the liquor license at no cost to the applicant, except for the $2,000 a year application fee. We just sent out a revised request for proposal, which has recently been posted on our website, which now includes blueprints, which we didn't have before, courtesy of Greg Reddington from Redcom Design. So, the deadline for submissions is January 12th. And if anyone is interested, I would encourage them to pick up an application. I think there's a walkthrough at the station on December 4th. And speaking of transit, last week, I attended a meeting with New Jersey Transit executives to represent the Raritan Valley Line Mayor's Alliance, along with members of the Raritan Valley Rail Coalition. And we are working together to advocate for the expansion of one-seat ride service along the Raritan Valley Line. In light of the potential long-term COVID impact on overall ridership, we believe that now is the right time to reassess and equitably allocate one-seat rides. New Jersey Transit committed to providing potential options for some shoulder peak service. And for, we're going to have a discussion in February. They are totally focused on the positive train control obligations, which have to be met by year end. Lifelong Westfield team is inviting seniors to a Zoom webinar with Chief Battleora on December 9th at 11 o'clock to discuss scams that target the senior population, how to avoid them, especially during the holiday season. So, if you are, if you are a senior or no one, please encourage them to attend. And thank you, Chief Battleora, for that. I invite everybody in the public to join me next Thursday, December 3rd, at noon, for a Facebook Live that I'll be hosting with Town Planner Don Sammet, Phil Abramson from our redevelopment firm Topology, and Richard Heaps from Streetworks, who presented at the last council meeting about their approach to smart redevelopment, as they consider the future of their Lord and Taylor property. Our panel discussion will address how other communities have handled notable inflection points and transformations, the power of community input, and the potential impact of COVID on Westfield's future as we analyze how to best position the town for success. So, I think it's a great opportunity to hear from the experts on what they're seeing nationally, statewide, and opportunities that we should be considering in town, for what I like to say, for Westfield to become a premier post-COVID community. On another note, today, we announced that we are kicking off the holiday season with a significant townwide initiative called Be the Light. It's to raise awareness and funds for hunger and food insecurity here in Union County. We're extremely fortunate to have Goo Goo Dolls' frontman and Westfield resident John Resnick willing to use his large platform to promote this event. It was an idea he initiated after he successfully kicked off our fundraiser for We Love Local in the Spring. We will be doing a livestream performance on the Town Facebook page Sunday night at 6:00, which will be followed by an online auction for donated items, such as a personal backyard performance from John himself, a signed guitar, and autographed copies of the Goo Goo Dolls' new Christmas album. Donations will be made to the Westfield United Fund, with proceeds going to the Westfield Food Pantry and the Community Food Bank of New Jersey. I can't think of a better way to celebrate the spirit of the season. You can find out all the details on our website. And the holidays is here, obviously, and it will look different this year in many respects. But people have been very hard at work to make sure that there's still plenty of cheer to enjoy in town. Our annual tree lighting and menorah lighting will still be taking place, albeit virtually, due to the restrictions on outdoor gatherings. And I've asked DWC Liaison Counselor Don Mackey to provide an update later on many of the planned activities at store, including a gingerbread contest, a holiday light contest, free parking, gift wrapping, and more. I just would simply like to reiterate how much our businesses need your support over these critical weeks ahead, which will make or break many of them. And I presume your Thanksgiving gathering will be smaller than usual this year, much like mine is going to be. It's just one more sacrifice we almost continue to make to keep everyone safe, especially as COVID continues, cases continue to surge. But there is light at the end of the tunnel with the recent positive developments surrounding vaccines, which should give us all hope. We just have to stay vigilant until we get there. So, please, please, especially over the holidays, I know our public health officials are very, very worried about potential outbreaks resulting from Thanksgiving. So, just do your part and maintain, you know, small gatherings and, and just be safe. And lastly, I'm sorry to conclude these remarks on a very sad note. Last night, longtime Westfield resident and planning board chairman Robert Newell passed away after a courageous battle with cancer. Robert's dedication to this community knew no bounds, and I am grateful for the opportunity I had to get to know him. I had the benefit of his warm embrace when I was a new member of the planning board, and he patiently taught me the ropes. As a longtime Westfielder, he surprised me with his openness to new ideas, which only seemed to energize him. He was the consummate volunteer, a gentleman's gentleman, a man who lived his life with honor and grace. I would ask if you'll call, just join me in a moment of silence in honor of Robert Newell. Thank you. We'll now move on to tonight's agenda. So, Tara?
Yep.
Any advertised hearings?
Yes, there are two advertised hearings tonight. The first is for General Ordinance Number 2199, an ordinance to amend the code of the Town of Westfield, Chapter 13, as relates to bus stops. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2199, please virtually raise your hand to make your comment. Be sure to include your name and address for the record. Again, these are comments for General Ordinance 2199.
See, Mayor, you can close this public hearing.
This hearing is closed.
The second is General Ordinance Number 2200, an ordinance to amend the code of the Town of Westfield, Chapter 13, through street and stop signs. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2200, please virtually raise your hand. Make your comment. Be sure to include your name and address for a record. Again, these are comments for General Ordinance 2200.
Now, Mayor, you may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed. Councilwoman Dardia, please move for the adoption of Public Safety, Transportation, and Parking Committee ordinances.
You're on mute, Mike.
Mike.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2199 on second reading, in ordinance to amend the code of the Town of Westfield, Chapter 13, as it relates to bus stops.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harmily?
Yes.
Councilwoman Agrippa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Contract?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brendel?
Yes, this motion is carried.
Mayor, I'd also like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2200 on second reading, in ordinance to amend the code of the Town of Westfield, Chapter 13, through street and stop signs.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harmily?
Yes.
Councilwoman Agrippa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Contract?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brendel?
Yes, this motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Town Council Regular Meeting of November 10th, 2020?
Moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Mrs. Rowley, do we have any petitions or communications?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Thank you. Now, it's time for open discussion by citizens. Please virtually raise your hand to make your comment on any subject on which we have jurisdiction, and be sure to state your name and address for the record.
First person we have is Cindy Gagliardi. Cindy, it says you're using an older version of Zoom. Let me see if we can get you. Says, looked to promote the panel. Let me see if I can get you to speak real quick. Let me talk to our web administrator. In the meantime, let me call on Mr. Sean Mullen.
Jim, I just, I just want to remind everybody, these are public comments, and we will, it's not Q and A, and so, we'll just take your public comments and address any questions when the public comment portion is closed.
Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, can you hear me, Jim?
Yes, go ahead. Name and address, please.
Yeah, Sean Mullen, 763 Carlton Road. Good evening, everybody, and again, thank you for your service to the town. I just had two quick things. The first is, I wanted to just express my thanks to the brave men and women of the Westfield Police Department. I know you guys have had a busy couple of weeks with some arrests and some potentially violent incidents over at Mindawaskin Park. So, I think all of us here in town owe you guys a measure of thanks for the work that you're doing. And, you know, the fact that you guys are putting yourselves in harm's way, and that also applies to our folks over at the Westfield Fire Department. So, it's important, you know, when, when everybody's with their families this Thanksgiving, to remember that, you know, we've got firefighters and police officers who choose to be away from their families on Thanksgiving, so they can keep us safe. So, I wanted to express my thanks in that regard. The second thing is, I was reading recently that there's a program down in Hamilton, down in Mercer County, that they've called the Propane Support Program, which I believe that municipality is engaged in, where they're creating a fund for propane for their businesses that have had to move their operations outdoors. And I thought that was a great idea when I read about it, and I was wondering if there was a similar initiative that we could adopt here in town, either through the Downtown Corporation or something at the municipality level, where we could support our businesses, because I'm sure propane, you know, 20 bucks a tank, I'm sure these guys are rifling through this stuff. And, you know, the weather's getting colder. So, I thought it was a good initiative that they had, and wanted to see if there was something we could do over here at Westfield for similar support for our businesses. Thanks very much, and I hope everybody has it at Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. The, okay, so we have a next person, Bob. Bob, are you there? Bob? You unmute yourself, you can speak. All right, Bob, we'll have to come back to you. We have Terry Quinn. Terry, are you there? Terry, again, are you there? Go ahead, Terry. Terry? You're, you're off, you go ahead and speak. Mr. Quinn? You can go ahead and speak. Okay. We'll come back to you, Terry. We have a phone number here to speak. Don't know who the person's name is, but area code 215. Don't take yourself off mute, you can speak. Area code 215. Are you there? Okay. And let's go back to, we'll come back to your area code 215. Cindy Gagliardi, again. Let me. Let's see if we can get, I had to promote.
Jim, can you hear me?
Who's that?
It's Mike Gagliardi.
Oh, Mike, okay, yes, Cindy's, okay, yes, Mr. Gagliardi, you had name and address?
Computer, but it's actually Mike Gagliardi.
Okay. Your address? Go ahead. Go ahead, Mike.
We might have to turn the chat function on.
Yeah, hold on, Mike, are you still there? We, you can. Go ahead and speak. Go ahead, Mike.
Looks like you dropped off.
He's, he's actually on a, we had to promote to a panelist, so they weren't, he has an older version of Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. You have, you there, Mike?
Yeah, we might have to.
Mike and Cindy, are you there? Hello?
They're not on mute.
Yeah, we're, we'll come back to you, guys. Nobody wants to see the talk. We'll go back to Mr. Quinn. Mr. Quinn, are you there? Asking you to unmute. Go ahead, Mr. Quinn. Go ahead, name and address. Mr. Quinn? Mr. Quinn, are you there?
He's raising his hand.
Yep.
We might.
Your microphone is ready to go, Mr. Quinn, you can speak.
All right, we might have to turn the chat function on, so that they give us, can give us an alternate number.
Okay, the chat function's on. All right, we'll come back to you. We have a new person here. Family PC. So, let's unmute, Mr. Family PC, are you there?
Nice.
All right.
We're going to have to fix this.
All right, the chat function, let's see, this is, yeah. So, we're going to announce the calling number in a minute. Okay. Mike Gagliardi, are you there?
I am, Jim, how are you?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mike, yeah, name and address.
Yes, Mike, Mike Gagliardi, 1026 Irving Avenue.
Thanks, Mike, go ahead.
Okay, very good, okay. Thank you for the opportunity, Council. Been a resident of Westfield for 45 years and never spoken at a council meeting before. So, thank you for the opportunity. I have to say that this was going to be a different tone, I was going to take a few hours ago, than it is right now. This is in regards to the Christmas decorations that are starting to go up downtown. I was much relieved to hear, really, an hour or two ago, from a friend who reached out to Councilwoman Havegood and Councilwoman Mackey for clarification about the decorations. I was, we. Last night, I was, I, I sent an email to Mayor Brendel and my councilman, Mayor Agrippa, oh, excuse me, Mayor Agrippa, I guess, wish, but Marco Agrippa and David Contract about the issue of the decorations, from what I had heard, that snowflakes looked like they were replacing all of the traditional wreaths that hang from our downtown lamp post that have been, you know, really been hung downtown ever since I can remember. And so, I was trying to get some clarification as to what was happening with that. I was really very relieved to hear that the wreaths are going to go up in concert with the snowflakes at this point. And that the snowflakes would continue to be hung, to stay hung up on the lamp posts through January and February as a way to attract local business and things like that, which I think would be a good idea and a positive. Also, very happy to hear that the wreaths are going to continue, because I think they give our town a real, I guess, nice traditional Christmas look, and they've been a part of our decorations for a long, long time. However, it was just a little disappointing. I'm, I'm really glad that those things are occurring, and I was glad to finally get that information corrected. But, you know, last night, I certainly wasn't getting that same kind of information from the Town Council and the mayor. Councilman Contract was nice enough to email me back last night. But it was his impression that he was mentioning that the change to snowflakes were made in part, as far as he was concerned, because some residents found the wreaths to be too religious. And, you know, that gave me the impression that these wreaths were being taken away because some people were offended by Christmas and holiday decorations. That's the impression I got. Okay? To Marco Agrippa's credit, he said he did not know. And I didn't get any response from the, from the mayor. Mayor responded to my wife and indicated that, really, there was no indication from the mayor that she knew what was happening with the wreaths. So, like I said, I'm relieved to hear that the wreaths are going up. They're going to be part of the decorations. So, like I said, I'm relieved to hear that the wreaths are going up, they're gonna be part of the decorations. I certainly would like the council to confirm that the wreaths are gonna be going on the lamp posts in addition to the snowflakes. But I also really feel that this is a bad look for our town council and the mayor that not everyone's on the same page about this information. You know, like I said, to Mark's credit, he said he didn't know. I think David, you know, tried to talk to me about it, but you know, I think he got out over his skis on this quite a bit. And, you know, like I said, the mayor didn't seem to have any knowledge about the wreaths going up at all, in addition to the snowflakes, so I just hope that the council can get on the same page with this information. And I think it would save a lot of aggravation and time. And that it could and that it could save a lot of aggravation and time if the mayor and the council were better coordinated on these kind of issues. So I just hope that can continue in the future and we can improve on that. So I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays and a very merry, merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thanks, man. Thank you, Mr. Gagliardi. Off, we'll go back to the attendees. Just remind attendees, please raise your hand. Let me also publicly announce the calling number. If the raising the hand function's not working, the public can dial in at number six one six four six five eight nine eight zero five. And the webinar ID is seven five three eight two nine five eight one. And you press number sign on your phone. This is also appears in the chat room right now for viewing to the public. So we go back to, we have one person raising their hand right now. That's Mr. Quinn. Mr. Quinn, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me, Jim?
Yes, go ahead and name and address, please, thank you.
Seven to five Woodland Avenue, first time caller, longtime listener, especially on mute. But so I missed the previous caller, but I still want to thank everybody for, you know, their all the time they're volunteering across, you know, the whole spectrum. So we're talking about traditions here and honoring three hundred years. And one of these traditions is having the wreaths up in downtown and, you know, my request would be for any reef that's at a disrepair to be replaced with a new reef. You know, not a snowflake, because when it comes down to it, we've all been through so much and the Westfield comeback is a lot stronger than any snowflake. So, so that's it. I appreciate it, Jim. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? You can raise your hand virtually or call in again. The calling number's in the chat room with the webinar ID. We'll give it a minute or two, see if anyone else wants to call in or raise your hand. See anyone calling in or raising their hand? Here we go, we have somebody by name Jeff. Jeff, are you there? Can you hear us?
Jim?
Yes, go ahead, name and address, please.
This is Jeff Pate, six two four Salter Place, Westfield, of course.
All right. Good.
Question I just have. With the rink use very popular this year and you guys have a no idling sign out there on South Chestnut. Doesn't seem to be adhered to very much this year. Is there something we can do to address the idling this year? I remember last year the mayor was very good about the idling and she was promoting no idling in the town and it's not being addressed there. And I'm not saying it's anybody's fault here, that's not my point. I would like some help from you folks if possible, how we can address that at the park here in Gumpford. That's really my, my concern tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Pate. Anyone else like to be heard? Raise your hand or call in? I think seeing none there, I think we have no more call-ins and no more is hands.
And the public comment portion of the meeting is closed and just to address a few of the comments that came up from Mr. Mullen. Thank you for the acknowledgement of our Westfield Police and Fire Departments. I couldn't agree with you more. It's been trying times for everybody, but for all of them in particular. And the police certainly have had their hands full recently and a big shout out to Chief Battle Laura for being on, on, on all of those. So we're very grateful. And actually, it's interesting, the propane support program, we'll forward that to, I'm sure Dawn probably took note of it. And we'll forward that to Bob Zuckerman at the DWC. Every, every town has different levels of programs of support for businesses, so but we'll take a look at it because I agree with you that, especially now that we've just allowed Parklets to extend for as long as possible, the propane could get very pricey. So I definitely think that's something worth looking into, so thank you. Well, let's see. Oh, for Mike Gagliardi about the wreaths, so yes. So, Mr. Gagliardi, I know you sent a note last night, which I didn't see until too late and I saw that that David Contract had already replied. And then I got your wife's notes. And just to be clear, I was very clear about what was going on with the, with the decorations and the wreaths. And I just pulled up the email that I sent to your wife. And I did indicate, the, the issue with the wreaths is that they were at the end of their life cycle, had been refurbished several times. It was determined that many of them was, they couldn't be refurbished any further, so I noted that in my email and I actually said, and those that are able to be repaired will soon be rehung. And I think some of them were indeed rehung, so that was in my note and I shouldn't, shouldn't give you any impression that we didn't know what was going on. It was very clear. Dawn can speak more fluidly about it because she was leading the charge. But, yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Councilman.
Councilman Contract's response said it was removed for religious reasons, so that's, that's what it
So I got it, so I, but that, I'm not gonna, I can't address councilman's response and, and I assume that was his personal opinion, but certainly wasn't, certainly not the rationale behind the change or anything like that. And I think it was very clear. And I know that Mr. Quinn I'm sorry, can I just continue, Mark?
An email change, so you're familiar.
So Mr. Quinn mentioned for Westfield three hundred that he thought the wreath should continue. And the ironic part about that is, it was the Westfield three hundred committee that actually determined that this, this snowflake theme and the lights was gonna be their contribution in light of one of the, one of the recommendations that a lot of placemakers around the country state is that it's best if you can keep lighting in town beyond the holidays to make it feel vibrant and tend to be in the dead of winter. So knowing what our businesses were going through and knowing that the wreaths were the end of their life and last year all, many of us heard complaints about the, the state of our downtown holiday lighting. So the Westfield three hundred committee had worked with Dawn and the DWC to make a significant contribution to this, to this light and to the, and the snowflakes that would extend beyond the holiday season. And as I mentioned, it was never meant intended to fully replace the wreaths. Those that were able to be refurbished are being rehung. I don't know how many that will be, but that was always the intention. So and regarding Mr. Pate and the ice rink and the idling, you're right, the idling is a big pet peeve of mine. I know it's certainly a pet peeve of the green teams who did a big video about that. So if that's something that's happening, we'll see if we can't have a larger maybe more frequent police presence there to, to mitigate, because as you know, that's not, they're not allowed to idle for more than, I think, three minutes. So I think that was it. And I'm sorry, Councilman LaGrigpo, there's something you wanted to say?
No, I'm sorry, just, Dawn, approximately, you know, how many were saved or could be rehung as far as the wreaths are concerned or?
They're in the process of hanging them right now. Many of them are beyond repair and honestly not up to our standards. So I know that a bunch of them went up today. But we're going through them piece by piece to make sure that anything that goes up is something that we can go, get, be proud of. I personally received many, many texts over the last couple of years of people complaining about the state of our decor. So this was a wonderful enhancement by the Westfield three hundred committee. Many longtime Westfield residents and committee chairs sit on that committee and everybody was a part of this decision. I think it was very fortuitous that we did it when we did, as many, many as the mayor has mentioned. Winter placemaking during the pandemic recommend having a significant light installation and keeping it up through the winter. So these things take a lot of planning a lot of money and a lot of time. So I think it's gonna be a beautiful enhancement. It's gonna work in concert. I'd like to point out that we also made a quite a significant investment in an Instagrammable moment, which is a stack of Christmas ornaments six feet tall, sort of like you see in Manhattan. Today, we already saw people taking their holiday photo in the large snowflake that frames the Presbyterian Church on Mindewaskin. So I think you're gonna be quite happy to see Christmas is well represented amongst the snowflakes that will beautify the town well into the winter.
Hey. How'd you come up with that response? You just, that was
Councilman, I can, you guys can take that offline. I think that it's, you know, beyond, beyond that, you guys can talk about that offline. And I, listen, I have to say you know, what a privilege that really honestly, that we're having an argument over wreaths and, and snowflakes. Honestly, I want to say, give me a break, really. People are dying around here. People are in the frickin' hospital. We've got people who can't gather at Thanksgiving and this is how people are spending their time. Thinking we're fighting over snowflakes. We're trying to do something for the benefit of our businesses downtown and this is what people are arguing about? What a privilege, really. I hope everybody takes a moment to think about it. Seriously. I just think that we've got so many better other things to be talking about. So get some perspective, really. I just, I just, I'm really disappointed. Honestly.
Who, who you saying that to, Mayor? I'm just curious.
You're on mute there.
I mean, maybe could have donated the money to, that was spent on decorations to people that could have utilized it.
Mark, seriously, we, we have had fundraises in, in this town for our downtown businesses. I speak to our merchants on a regular basis. This is an economic driver to bring shoppers and diners to our downtown. Perhaps instead of always looking to throw a grenade, you could roll up your sleeves and ask how you can be of help. I have spent the last week, you could laugh all you want, Mark. I spent the last week outside, excuse me.
And Councilman, enough. We're gonna move, we're gonna move on to the business at hand.
No, no one's arguing with anybody. Statement and you guys are all trying to cover up for it, just say
Councilman, no, enough. Honestly. Honestly, we're gonna, it's, there's, nobody's covering up for anybody. All right, honestly, Councilor Havegood, can we move on to bills and claims?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move bills and claims in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
May I have a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Next on the agenda is reports of standing committees, beginning with the Finance Policy Committee, Councilwoman Havegood.
Thank you again, Mayor. I have eight resolutions, five of which I'd like to move as a package. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant to refund street opening cash bond. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant to refund street opening cash bond. A resolution authoring the CFO to draw warrants for overpaid taxes for twenty twenty. A resolution author, a resolution to amend contract award for the purchase of lighting in connection with Westfield three hundred. And a resolution to approve insertion, a special item of revenue in the municipal budget for the UC CARES Act.
May I have a second?
Second, Dardia.
Any discussion?
Mayor, can I just make one comment? Number five on this list was the late starter we added, just so everyone understands. So you remember previously the council's resolution to submit to the county up to two hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars of reimbursable expenses. We received information from the county yesterday that they have approved up to that amount for us to submit. The next step is this resolution tonight. Our CFO will be submitting this to the state of New Jersey for approval. Once the state approves the, after one fifty-nine resolution, then the county can then start dispersing money back to us of, for submissions we've already made, just to give you the understanding of what that is. That's why I was a late starter, because we didn't get word from the county until yesterday. But it's all good news.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 This motion is carried.
And I'd also like to move a resolution authorizing the CFO to submit an application for approval of a special emergency.
May I have a second?
Second, cats.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmley? Councilman LaGrigpo?
I'll be voting no, but I'll give my explanation when we introduce the ordinance.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
Finally, oh, maybe not finally. I'd like to move a resolution authorizing the issuance of a special emergency notes equal to the amount of the special emergency appropriation.
May I have a second?
Second, Dardia.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrigpo?
No.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
And I'd also like to move special ordinance number two 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 zero and first reading, an ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash fifty-three.
May I have a second?
Second, cats.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I'll be voting no, as the town did have a fourteen and a half million dollar surplus at one time and at this point, I just feel we're punting to the future for the town council in the future to be responsible for this money. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I, if I could maybe ask Jim Gilde to make a couple of comments about this, because we had an extended conversation about this in a recent Finance Policy Committee meeting. I'm not sure that Councilman LaGrigpo's character, characterization of this is really accurate. This is just giving us options for the future and I thought maybe Jim could expand a little bit for us.
Sure, I'm more than happy to do that, Mayor, if that's okay. So, so again, these three legislation pieces, the two resolutions that were just adopted and this ordinance are new mechanisms provided by the state of New Jersey to allow municipalities to prepare in the case of need for COVID-related revenue losses. And so as, as the detail of the resolute or the ordinance indicates, most of the revenue loss we do expect is in the pool utility. We knew that going in, we actually did better than we thought, but we're still gonna have a revenue loss there. Other categories of revenue loss include the court and the parking department, which also were expected. So again, these mechanisms are put in place for us to approve. There is a state process required to be eligible for these type of things. Again, as I mentioned in my email to you all. Again, as I mentioned in my email to you all, that we have to do these to become eligible. We may not need to do the revenue losses in the budget by year's end because we are doing well in other areas. The pool is really the one we're gonna need to, and just very simply, what this allows any town to do is you set up a special emergency to basically spread the cost of the revenue loss over a six-year period. The first year being no realization of the revenue loss. And then the four or five years out from there, you're allowed to pay off per ti, or you know, per year. That's a huge help to a utility like the pool because we have direct control over, you know, fees and so forth if we needed it. But this is an amazing mechanism that, you know, towns are trying to avail themselves of to, to make sure we don't have major revenue losses we can't absorb. So again, right now, all the council's doing tonight is adopting these to become eligible. We will report back to the S committee ultimately to council later this year to see if we actually need to exercise these once we know more information about our final collections.
Jim, the, what was it, 1.27 million was the shortfall?
That's the, that's the calculation the state requires of the shortfall of the three categories, pool, court, and parking. Most of it's pool.
Now, if that money, do we have to pay interest on that money if we actually, if we do go forward with utilizing it?
I don't know the answer to that right now. It's a special emergency, Mark, so there are different state rules for that. And I don't know off the top of my head what, what their state requires, but they are allowing municipality to do this. Really, just one other thing to mention, this, this legislation was designed quickly by the state because there are towns unlike ours that rely upon only non-property tax revenues like hotel tax, for example. You can imagine in a community where the hotel tax is one of the major revenue sources, no one's in the hotel. And so they, they're desperately in need of things like this. We're much more fortunate than that, but yet nonetheless, every town is experiencing revenue losses. So the answer to the question, I don't know the answer about rev, about the interest, but it will be negligible if anything. So again, we, if we don't have to use it, we won't, but we want to have the ability to use it in case we need it.
Yeah, that's why it's always good to have a rainy day fund with things like this, but.
And we, and we still do, Councilman LaGrapo, we still have a nice rainy day fund and you, you as well know that the fourteen and a half million was directly used in many cases to lower taxes over the last several years. And I think not voting for this doesn't give the town flexibility and we should all support this to give the town flexibility. There is absolutely no requirement we use this, but let's put ourselves in a position, if we use it and want to use it, we can. If we all voted along your lines, we'd give Jim and our CFO the flexibility and that would be a huge mistake.
Well, if we voted along my lines, we'd have $10 million in surplus right now. So, thank you.
Mark, if we followed your budgetary approach this year, then, then the town would have offered no services. Because if I recall, you wanted, you wanted to basically cut taxes, not raise any fees and, and therefore we would have had.
It's because we had fourteen and a half million dollars.
Okay, so, all right, I'm sorry, can we move on? I, that's clearly not productive. So can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrapo?
No.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yes. This motion is carried.
I'd like to move General Ordinance number 2201 on first reading, an ordinance to amend the General Ordinance number 2154 entitled, "An Ordinance to Amend the Code of the Town of Westfield, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Town Officers and Employees, Division 3, Personnel Positions and Salary Schedule, Section 2-12.28, Schedule."
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrapo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yeah, yes. This motion is carried.
And lastly, I'd like to move a resolution authorizing the CFO to make a budget transfer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrapo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yes, this motion is carried. Next is the Code Review and Town Property Committee. Councilwoman Mackey.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move a resolution authorizing continuance of zoning discretion due to the impacts of COVID-19.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried.
I would like to also move General Ordinance number 2202 on first reading, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Westfield, Chapter 29A.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrapo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yes, this motion is carried.
I would like to speak a little bit to a couple of events coming up. The first thing I want to mention is that we're having an auction for some of the sculptures of butterflies that were part of the Art Takes Flight art exhibit. I want to thank the Westfield Public Art Commission for putting it together. You can find information on our website and the online auction will begin December 4th and it will, will run through one week. And as the mayor mentioned, there are still plenty of holiday things going on around town. We have free parking. We also have, due to a grant, we have a downtown welcome center that is in the old Ann Taylor Building. It will be up and running on Friday, which is going to provide free gift wrap and delivery. We are launching a website for our town called Beyond Main where you'll be able to gift somebody a credit where they can shop then at any of the participating stores. That will also link to a free gift wrap and free delivery. So we're really hoping to do everything we can to drive shopping downtown. We want to remind everybody that before you click, consider the brick. So before you go on Amazon, please take a minute to remember how important this season is for our downtown merchants especially. And we will continue with our third annual gingerbread contest. We've extended the deadline to register through the 29th of November. We've already had a wonderful robust entries. We will have the first ice sculpting day in a very, very long time. I understand it used to be a tradition. So December 6th, we will have some live ice sculpting and sculptures placed around town. So we're very excited about that. And as been the discussion tonight, that we have new lighting around town and Instagrammable moments. So we'd love it if you get it out there, take your pic, picture, hashtag, love local shop Westfield. This way people will see where you are and hopefully be inspired to come to our town. And we want to thank the Westfield 300 Committee, the Downtown Westfield Corporation, and our presenting sponsor Valley Bank for everything they've done to instill a feeling of good cheer in our downtown this year. If anybody wants to volunteer, you can reach out to me. I've been out there with a bunch of elves the last week trying to make our town look like a Hallmark Christmas movie. So you'll see us out there hanging some garlands and balls and wreaths. So if you want to help, just shoot me an email because we'd love to have the extra hands. Thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
Hey, Don, Don, can you just comment on the, on the mayor mentioned virtual menorah lighting, lighting? Are there any more details here?
December.
I think that, um, we're gonna, we're probably do a live stream, David, but of course we can't have people gathering. So you'll, well, you'll find that on our Facebook Live. And to celebrate as a community, we're hoping everybody will tune in Sunday night and listen in on Johnny's songs from his Christmas album. And I think also there was another initiative to raise money for the food bank called Be the Light. And it was a luminary sale. And I believe that those people are being encouraged to light their luminaries. So we'll be looking at Facebook Live to give us those virtual experiences.
And David, the rabbi just reached out to me today about the menorah lighting, so I haven't circled back with him. But I'm imagining that we'll do a live stream and then I was going to see if he wanted to invite a small group, whether council members or whoever, we just didn't, we, you know, we just don't. So, and maybe I'll copy you on that email back to him so that maybe he can help coordinate as well.
He'll be okay with that because I spoke to him about that.
Oh, yeah, great. We'll do.
David, it's December 5th, per Rabbi block, so. I'm in touch with.
Okay.
So with that, I just, I do want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. We do have so much to be grateful for. Again, a special thanks to our first responders, the fire, the police, our rescue and all the town employees. Tara, so many of them have been either battling COVID or been in quarantine and continue to deliver our services and keep us safe unparalleled. So incredibly grateful to all of you and to you, Jim, for keeping the trains running on time through all of this. In spite of how hard it's been, we'll be around smaller tables this year. But I do think it's important to reflect back on all that we do have. This is here to think about what we have instead of what we want. And I think that more than today, so.
So thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I just want to say one thing, if you don't mind. In reference to giving thanks, back to Robert Newell. He's been volunteering, I looked up before I left, came home. He was appointed to the planning board in 1991, consecutive 29 years. I don't know if that's a record, but it's probably pretty close. It's pretty amazing to give thanks to him and his family.
Yeah, I'll definitely be thinking about their family this Thanksgiving for sure. That was, yeah, I am. Anyway, thank you for bringing that up, Jim. I didn't know how many years it was. I know it was in the decades though. It's, he's really incredible. So anyway, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. We'll see you, see you soon.
Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.